I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of April 13, 2015, to order. We'd like to start, if you would, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call shows we do have, well, Chief of Fire Department's a little busy right now with, I think they had a couple of different incidents going on, and of course it knocked power out to three quarters of the area. And also, so he's not here, and then Bev has called in sick, and I'm taking her call. I can testify that she's not very well. So, she's called last night, said she just knew she wouldn't be okay tonight. And outside of that, that's where we're at.
I'll make the motion, then we excuse Bev.
I'll support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, approval of minutes of March 23.
I'll move minutes. Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Approval of the bills, we do not have any.
Yeah, we do.
I'm sorry, it said, it said none on my sheet.
They're right here. I've got some.
I remember, no, I remember looking at some, but, okay.
On page one of the invoice list, this Visicom Services Network Support for $6,800. Anybody have an idea?
Yes, I do. Tech Resources, the city's IT support services, has dissolved as a corporation, and we needed to find IT resources to support city services, including update our firewall, reinstall antiviruses to the computers, because the only computer running antivirus currently was the server, and also to do day-to-day updates. We've had multiple problems in the last week with emails going down, the server needing rebooted. So, we signed a temporary contract with Visicom, which was local Detroit metro area, for the rest of the fiscal year. We're preparing to put out for an RFP RFQ for IT services for the new fiscal year to several different companies.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the same company that dissolved this? Is this the new person that took it? Did the company dissolve completely, or is there somebody?
The company dissolved completely. Visicom actually was recommended to me by the City of Novi. Their secondary outsourced support. The City of Novi has internal IT, and this is their backup IT resource.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
I have one more on page five of the invoice list. HRC for Lake Street paving rehab. What, anybody know what that's about? I mean...
HRC just submitted in April several back-end invoices that had not gotten paid for some reason, so that is why that is this week, this meeting's bill payment.
Okay. Do we have essentially like a log of things that are likely to be charged, and then we can check it off when?
Yes, we do.
Okay, how do we oversee or overlook something, then?
Because they didn't submit that invoice to us.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
So, that was their first submittal, then?
Right, it was the first time they had submitted it to us. There were, I believe, three or four in that total amount of invoices that, for the Lake Street project, had not been submitted.
Yeah, actually, when I was talking about a log, I was meaning...
They do submit to us the hours that they work, but that doesn't mean that their billing department always then sends us an invoice to charge us for that. So, we know how many hours that they've worked, but until we get an invoice from HRC, we don't pay them.
It just seems like there's, it should be linked to act, to real-time, like it should end up not being made up as things go along. There should actually be a chronicle of events that take place that you assign time to, and so nobody ends up running into something like this a year later, so.
So, it's all in the same budget, at least?
Yeah. I just like the idea of us knowing exactly where we stand on a project.
Understood.
Anything else?
I'll make the motion, then, then we approve the bills.
I'll support.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, approval of the agenda. I know we have some things to clarify here.
There are a couple of things to clarify. Under new business, the last item was not numbered, where it says agreement for purchase of storm sewer easement and to pay partial, part of the cost to relocate city storm sewer. That should actually be number five. It is not a continuation of number four. I believe, Mr. Mayor, you also...
Yes, I would like to also add, I guess it would have to be new business, number six, and that is reappointments of several commission members, as their times are up. And I'd be needing seconds on those when the time comes.
And the last clarification would be under number five, the executive session. I am choosing to revoke my consent to have that discussion in closed session, and would prefer that if the council chooses to hear or consider any complaints against me, that it be done in open session.
Okay. Okay. Any...
Oh, can I clarify?
Yeah.
Okay, so would that mean that we would still be having an agenda item to discuss any, I guess we can, I think complaints is the wrong word. I think there's a different way I would categorize it, but would that be on the agenda tonight for open session?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
So, it'd be number seven?
I would say so.
What's number one? Up here is old business. Oh, is that what it is? Okay. Well, do we need to have a supermajority to add those two to the agenda? I believe we do.
And...
Well, I mean, due to the nature of their timing, I don't think that we do. I mean, there are things that have just kind of unraveled it before we could have forecasted the need for this.
But it's already on the agenda, it's just getting moved to a different part of the agenda. Why would we need a supermajority?
Well, it'd be modified, yeah. If you need...
All right, I won't, I won't object to that.
I'd like to ask in the future, that we have the numbering of new, the new business stuff, one through whatever, and the, and the old business, one through whatever, just so it's easier if down the, down the road you need to reference something, it, it seems to make a little bit more sense if it's chronological. Sometimes it does get, I guess, confusing.
All right, are we all set? We decide we don't have to vote whether we're going to do reappointments and all that? Are we, you're okay? I don't hear otherwise, so, all right. Again, then we can move on to, all right, we still have to vote as amended, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, let's just vote on the agenda as amended.
I move the agenda as amended.
Yeah, I'll support.
Now for a discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Public comment. At this time...
No.
If, no? Okay.
One no.
At this time, public comment could be made by any, on any subject not listed here. So, if you've got something you need to say, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Doreen Hannan. I'm the Director at Salem South Lion District Library, 9800 Pontiac Trail, South Lion. Just wanted to give you a little update on the library, a few things coming up. The library this past Saturday hosted a coffee hour for Representative Gretchen Driscoll, and that was well-attended, and as you can imagine, many residents had questions about the upcoming special ballot proposal, 15-1. And I wanted to let the community know that the library will be hosting two additional opportunities. One is this coming Friday, April 17, at 10:00 a.m., Senator Kowal will be here. And on Thursday, April 30, Representative Crawford will be here at 4:00. And the community is welcome to come, come and go as you, as you would like.
Those dates again, please.
Friday, April 17, Senator Kowal at 10:00 a.m. And Thursday, April 30, from 4 till 6 is Representative Crawford.
Thank you, Doreen. And Doreen, you run a fine establishment there.
Well, thank you very much.
I view, I feel so comfortable when I walk in there, like I want to use your computers and so forth. It's just a very nice setting that you present.
Thank you. There was one other thing I wanted to let the community know. We just launched this new program. It's called 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, and we're very excited about it. It's promoting children and early literacy, as you know, is very important. And our friends of the library have been big supporters of this to help us kick it off, and I wanted to let the community know that we have this new program. We're very excited about it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doreen.
My name is Melissa Taylor, and I live in Hidden Creek Sub, and I'm here about my water bill that I received. It was for $1,244.02, and since I'm the only one living in the house, obviously, that's way too much. When I called the water department, because I was on vacation finally, I was told that that was purposely done to get my attention, because I hadn't called them regarding changing my water meter out. Now, their hours are 8:30 to 4:30, and I'm usually gone about 12 hours during the day, and I was not able to call them until my vacation. So, obviously, the water bill angers me greatly. There are also some other concerns that I have. The person on the phone admitted that I'm not the first person that has had a water bill like that sent to them on purpose to get their attention. I've talked to other people, and they've also brought up, what if somebody has had a series of bad luck, or, you know, one more financial problem would set them over the edge? What would that cause them to do? So, that's also why I'm here, because I've had friends who've told me their, their friends have had a heart attack and died when they've gotten an incredible bill like that. So, this obviously needs to be stopped. I've also contacted an attorney who has relayed to me that that is fraud, since it was done on purpose. And quite frankly, that puts into question the accuracy of all other bills that are sent out. If this person has this much control over what's on a bill, and there's no one there to, to monitor that, who knows what, what's been done to other people's bills? If you like the person, maybe make it a little less. If you don't like it, make it a little more. So, these are all concerns that I have based on the bill. If you'd like a copy of my previous bills, I have them here for you.
Thanks.
So, that's all, thank you.
Is this true?
He did send me a shot, because I didn't do mine. If I didn't call mine, it was to get my attention. He could have just gone.
$1,200? It's a big swimming pool.
My name is Ken Kanizel. I'm here as a representative of the First United Methodist Church of South Lion. I am just here looking for some help to solve what I thought was a very simple problem. You may remember that I was here last December to request an amendment to the city's sign ordinance, so we could erect a sign similar to the ones on the adjoining properties to our south and the north. This request was being made after we were initially told to apply for a variance to the ordinance. We were then told that an amendment would be cleaner than a variance. It is my understanding the ordinance was amended as written on the copy that I have. After we learned that the amendment had been approved, not by the way did we find out from any communication from the city, we again had our selected sign vendor apply for a permit to install the sign, only to be told that the sign did not meet a provision of the new amended ordinance dealing with the changeable sign area not to exceed one-third the total area of the sign. My first question is, what is the rationale for such a requirement? And secondly, why would this have been required, why would this requirement be added to the amendment when it obviously would make our sign out of conformance? We are only trying to have what our neighbors have. We are not trying to enlarge our sign. We are not requesting to move our sign. I called the city office last Wednesday looking for a help, and was assured the issue would be looked into. As of today, I have not had a return call. Let me voice a concern that I have. I most certainly do not want our church to get on the bad side of City Hall, as we may have other items that will require city permission in the future. We just want a new 21st century sign to publicize the many ways our church helps and serves this community. Thank you.
I'm actually here, I wasn't planning on saying anything, but on April 30, a Thursday night, from 6 to 9 p.m., the DDA is sponsoring a DDA Ladies Night Out. And as of this point, we have about 15 participating businesses. All the participating businesses, as well as some that are not going to stay open late, will be putting donated items into a large raffle basket, and then we pull one winner at the end of the night, and they walk away with a basket worth about $250, we're estimating. So, I guess that's it.
That's great. It's nice to hear something for the folks downtown. Anybody else? Okay, if any comments will be made on what was presented here, that will be done at the end of the meeting. And now we can move on to our old business, and that is a request for clarification of construction traffic restrictions related to the Knolls' development.
Paul Elko, nice to see the council again. As we left the last meeting, we had talked about having no construction traffic on Kestrel Court, and what we had, it was kind of a late addition to our approval that night, and I had voiced some concerns that until we were able to construct our bridge, it would be difficult for us to enter into the site. That stream that goes through there, that little stream that goes through there, is DEQ-sensitive, so we're very careful, you know, not to go through that. We've left some additional trees that were called to be removed on our site plan that were close enough to the lotland that we thought it might benefit the owners. One of the owners, I think, had said to me that, gosh, I was really hoping you'd take that tree down, so, you know, that's sometimes hard to guess, you know, what's right or wrong, but we're going to take a look at the tree. If it doesn't have good foliage, you know, when the spring comes out, we'll, we'll remove it for you, and you won't have to rake up those leaves anymore. So, anyway, at this point, we've tried our best to be as good as citizens as we can. We understand what you were trying to accomplish. We will certainly erect these signs to keep our carpenters, our plumbers, our electricians from zipping out, you know, through Kestrel Court. But I ask you at this point, that with, you know, and I think that we've been as responsive as we can in trying to work with the neighbors, that we will continue to do that. If it would make sense for us to pull that island out sooner, you know, to allow for a bigger area, it'd be easier to get trucks in, but I think it would make things, somebody might be quicker to go through there. With the island there, it tends to slow people down.
That's not the, the concern.
I understand what it is. But that's, and that was my concern when you had thrown that in at the end, that says we could really, it'd be a hardship on us at this point. We don't really have access.
You said you would need access from there during the construction of the bridge. You haven't even applied for the permit for the bridge, so that's a lark. There's, there's room to get around in that, that facility using the perimeter, driving around, if that's what you have to do to get to the other side. But you're not going to end up leaving a mud path on Kestrel Court during the full phase of the construction.
I think we've been very careful not to leave any mud on there. The only people that have been in there as of lately have been the residents who have gone in to, you know, to gather some of the wood that we've taken down.
Is that true?
That's all fine, but we're not going to, we're not going to roll on that.
Were there workers in there today? Because you said that the only people in there were residents. Can you please answer me?
All my workers went in through Mill Street today. There's a blue van in there, they told me it was a resident who lived around the corner, came in to get some firewood. It was not our people.
See, I specifically remember asking you the question, what would you need to use that entrance for? And you would say, you said constructing a bridge. And the issue I'm having is that since you haven't even applied for the bridge, and God knows how long that process is going to take, because you haven't even requested the permit, which is question number one, why hasn't the permit been requested?
We do have the permit for the bridge.
You got that?
We have the permit.
Well, and it's, this is the DEQ. They move at a pace that doesn't match what we would like to be done. I'm sure you're well aware of the...
No, I understand that, but I mean, what we're hearing, I'm hearing something that's, because I asked you repeatedly when we threw that on, is that going to be an issue? And you said no. And now...
You know what? And remember, that was as we were kind of done, and you kind of caught me flat-footed. It was nothing where it was on the agenda to talk about ahead of time, and I didn't have a chance to really think about it.
No, 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 sir.
If it's not, all right. If it's not anything you want to do, we will muddle our way through and do whatever, and that's fine.
No, I'm just saying, no, no, no. I don't want to put this, you, you know, putting me on the defensive. I asked you twice during that...
And I'm saying that I was wrong. I said I hadn't had a chance to think and process it. I mean, I really didn't think about it when it was there, and after two years, I was probably so ecstatic to get approval, I probably looked past it.
So, now you're saying you do need that entrance to do the majority of your construction?
Not the majority.
Well, how much?
We're going to do whatever we can not to use it, all right? That's why...
The problem is you were being, using it more than you said you were going to use it, and the purpose of why you were going to use it in the first place was to construct a bridge. You now have your permit. When did you get the permit?
Oh, it was just recently.
Two days ago, I got it in a truck.
Okay. All right, so how long does bridge construction take?
Now, the DEQ is meeting, this is out there tomorrow. The engineering is going to take between one and a half and two weeks to get the approval for the retain, for the retaining wall that goes along with the box culvert that we're putting in. So, that was the, what the engineers said it would take them to get the specs that were asked and required of them for that.
And the reason you can't use the Mill Street entranceway is why?
I'm not saying we can't. I'm saying that if there is something that, bringing in something that is heavier, if we're just going in and out like we are now, we'll continue to use Mill Street. But what it comes down to is that if we did have to bring in trucks for material for that, and it may take stockpiling or whatever, you know, we're not putting, I don't think we're having undue traffic there, is what I meant. We're not running in 100 semis a day on that spot.
Were you running more traffic through the court than you were on the Mill Street entrance?
It was 50/50. I think what it came down to is we had, you know, we had pickup trucks, you know, from the workers that went in and parked there versus to go down the hill and through the mud and everything else, and we had trees, until we had them removed, there was really not a way to get through there. You know, it's just, now the trees are down, we can remove them if it's that. I'm, I'm not going to fight this thing very hard, as you can tell.
Okay.
If it's something that's, if it's that important, I'm just going to give up on it and move on.
I, I think it's important for our residents that are here. I mean, we, you pretty much told us that wasn't going to be an issue.
Asked and answered, and that's fine.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I, I...
Go ahead.
Are we done on that issue? Because I'd like to ask you another question about, have you been working with a planner with your trees removal?
Yes.
So, the, I heard there's some trees in there that weren't supposed to come down that are down.
I don't think so.
Well, you guys prematurely started taking stuff in Phase 2 down, trying to get in front of this bad business.
Oh, Phase 2, but they're not, they're not, they're not protected trees. We just, yes.
I know, but they hadn't, you hadn't put fencing up and, you know, I mean, you didn't follow what our process is. You know that, so it seems kind of strange to have to dance about every issue that comes up.
Is there still a red tag on that site, or no?
They are not, they, we did not officially red-tagged it. Mr. Elko agreed not to work on it until he had a chance to come before the council.
Can I?
And we discussed that with the city attorney and agreed that that was the equivalent of a red tag.
So, there's been no work in there for two weeks?
We were there today. I'll be, I thought we said we weren't going to use the court. I, I, that was my...
Yeah, they've been working in there.
That's what my understanding was, too.
We were just, we were just there today.
I didn't have any misgiving with the entering from Mill Street, as long as you weren't going through, through Kestrel Court. I mean, that was what the agreement was, so...
Has the agreement been signed?
Yes.
That's all, it's been signed, okay.
Chairman of the Planning Commission? We received some places, all about the trees. A couple of us did go over there Saturday and do a spot check, and what it appears, without looking at all of them, is there are certain areas where, there's areas of trees that were to be either wetlands or DEQ, somewhat protected, and it appears from what we looked at, is all the trees in the middle of the site, whether they were to be protected or not, were gone, with a few exceptions. And just with our spot checks, there's like a tree number 973, which was a black walnut, 12 inches in caliber size of a tree, is gone. Tree 976, which is a 20-inch black walnut, is gone. Tree 977, 978, 323, 211, 975, I've got a list of others that were to not be removed, were not only removed, but some of them were still laying on the grounds, on the ground with the tags on them, and they were marked to be removed, although they're on the list of trees that were not supposed to be removed. 20-inch walnuts are...
That's a huge problem.
It is. I mean, it's hard to buy good graces doing that, so...
And we had our surveyors go out and, and it was stacked, it was staked, the tree fence was there.
Well, well, the tree, first of all, for what I'm, for what I'm told by a couple residents around here, they were there on, a day or two after their approval here, way prior to any of their permits to remove trees, and started removing them right away. And it doesn't appear there was any care to, to save any of the trees in the center of the property, besides the fact that even when they started, the snow fencing, the silt fencing was not in place. They did go into Phase 2, which they were told not to by our planner, did it anyways, and it really appears at the center of the site was just clean cut, clear cut.
The sand, the...
Some of those trees that are missing, I don't know what the value to a forester is on a 20-inch black walnut, but I bet it's sizable, and that's why it's gone.
Because that was on your property, and someone cut it down, you'd be getting a lot of money from them.
Yeah, we found that the black walnut, I mean, 20 years ago, it's regardless.
It's on the list here to remain, and it's gone.
But are you, do you agree those trees are gone?
I have no reason to doubt them. If they, we followed, we followed where our surveyor marked the trees, and we worked within that area.
We did a spot check of roughly 50 to 60 trees, and out of those 50 to 60 trees, almost 20 that were supposed to stay were gone. 20 to 30 percent, and that's just on a small check. And there was hundreds of feet of snow fence that was supposed to be installed, it's not installed. Hundreds of feet of silt fence is supposed to be installed, not installed. It wasn't installed, as of Saturday, the silt fence, the silt fence was still in place.
Where was it not installed? I thought we had everything...
Behind every house.
Oh, behind the house.
Down the rest of the ridge, there's no protection of their yards.
Around part of the wetland and across the entire division between Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Great bust. It's a thousand...
So, can I, can I speak up, say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This whole project is very frustrating. I mean, from, from the beginning, it's from the very beginning when you were kicking it off, it's not, there's a patterning here, one issue after another, after another. You were told not to use Kestrel, Kestrel Court and Kestrel Ridge, and you said, I remember you were sitting right there, saying, okay, I will only use Mill Street. Sure enough, that wasn't followed. There was a discussion to put a red tag on, then the agreement was, we won't work until the 23, or at least that's been how it was explained to us, was that you won't do any work until you come to our city council meeting. I've heard... I've heard that almost every other day, there's been workers in there. Now we come to find out trees are being removed, we come to find out the, what, the silk is not put up? You just applied for the permit, just got, I mean, it's just one thing after another. What do we to expect? You know, five, five days from now, two months from now, six months from now.
I will tell you why we jumped the gun. And, and I came in and I spoke with, with, with Tim. There was a more than reasonable belief that there was going to be a moratorium on removal of all trees due to the possible threat of the long-eared brown bat. It was on the fish and game possible extinction list that would have, what we were told, and I think we shared emails back and forth, and I think, no, I didn't...
I've not communicated with you in any way on this brown bat removal.
I spoke with you in the office here when you were walking out.
I did, nothing that I, we talked about can be construed as an approval or permission to remove trees. I don't have that authority to begin with.
So my question is, what are we to expect six months from now?
My question is, what are you going to do about the trees? I'd like to see that site red-tagged until you make a decision about those trees, and all the trees are gone through by the planner.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Tim?
I've got a little bit of mixed information about whether the PD agreement has actually been signed. I know that Lynn has indicated it is, Lisa's and Ron don't remember if it is. So my suggestion would be that we make it very clear to Mr. Cook and Mr. Elko that they are not to be on the site doing any work until that agreement is signed. If it is in fact signed, that's, then it's taken care of.
The reason I was under the understanding it was signed was Lisa informed Mr. Cook was to come in a specific afternoon and sign the agreement.
Has it been signed? Did you sign it?
I have not seen him come in and sign it.
No, it hasn't been signed.
It's still sitting on the counter where it's been waiting for him.
I signed it.
Why are you working then if we have a, we don't even have a signed agreement?
I see.
Why, why is there a delay? Why is there a delay in signing the agreement? Why haven't you signed it?
I was waiting for my attorney to get back in town.
Okay, we are now in April. Has it been gone for four months?
Almost, yeah, but he's, he's back in town.
So you've been working, removing trees on the property without a signed agreement, and you still want us to allow you to work there without a signed agreement?
And you're the ones that haven't signed it, not us.
Yeah, we've signed it.
What, seriously, what, what more needs to be done?
Well, if he's back in town, we'll sign it tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Just so council knows, I've had communication from Mr. Frankenna, Mr. Cook's attorney, indicating the agreement was all fine. I provided him with a signed copy, signature page, signed by the city, and he was in, he indicated that it would be signed by the developer, an owner of the property.
Why hasn't it been signed?
I was waiting for him to come down here with me, and go over it.
Well, get it signed, would you? Okay. You know, you had made an allusion to, you've been kind of hamstrung for the last two years trying to get this project up and running. Do you think that some of this kind of stuff might have played some role in that? I mean, this kind of behavior, it didn't start just now. So the complications haven't been on the city's side, so let's just get that out front, all right?
Well, we'll get it signed. And I, and in all honesty, I spoke with Carmen. I know you didn't give me an approval, and you said you have to talk to Carmen about this. Carmen came out, inspected the fence.
He can't give you that approval.
Carmen can't, he, the city inspects your fence for a silt fence. I put them in all the time. The city comes out and inspects. You have to call the city and say, I have put up my silt fence, and I would like a approval. And they come out and sign off on it. I do it every day.
I, I just...
Is this your first rodeo?
Not in South Lyon, yes.
Well, this is South Lyon, not Lyon Township, where you're building all the...
I spoke with Carmen, and Carmen said he was coming out to inspect it. I'm sorry, that was exactly...
Carmen doesn't inspect your silt fence, the city inspects it.
How would I know that if he tells me he's coming to inspect it?
How many developments have you done?
Many.
Okay. So you're saying that in all those other many developments, you'd get the city planner to inspect it and sign off on it? Or would you require...
This is my first rodeo in South Lyon, as you say, I don't know how...
Carmen did come out to inspect them, so, I mean, it's not as though that's a complete lurk.
Right.
Carmen came out to look at them, but he's not the guy that signs off on them.
Now, let me ask this question, just so I can be clear. Who do I ask to inspect it to sign off on it?
Now, that one's a little over the top. You go to the building department, the building inspectors end up doing the inspection.
That's Mr. Smith, right?
Yes.
And I've spoken with him, and it's, I have his phone, his phone number on my phone. I've talked with him several times. There was nothing here just going willy-nilly behind it. I'm speaking to people. I'm very careful.
You're cutting down trees that have been approved to stay. You're working without a signed document, yet you're not going around people? You're not going behind anyone's back?
I didn't say, I, you're putting words in my mouth.
No, I'm not. I am just, no, no, sir, I am not.
Words that you've said.
And I asked for permission to cut the trees because of the possibility of this bat. And it was the information we had that there was a better-than-average chance that there would be no tree cutting after April first.
Who'd you ask?
Which speaks volumes pretty much about the intent of that as well.
Yeah, you shouldn't have attacked the trees then. I mean, you got to follow the DNR and the federal regulations.
The DNR said there would be no tree cutting after April first if the bat is a migratory bat.
And if you didn't have all your ducks in order by April first, then shame on you. You don't just go in and cut the trees because you heard a rumor and you didn't have your ducks in order. You need to put your ducks in order, and Building 101 tells you who inspects your silt fence.
And strip mining is taboo, period, in our ordinance. That's what you did.
Can you please?
Well, you stripped down all, every so-called viable tree.
It looks like a war zone.
It's a moonscape over there now.
Scott?
And, and talking with Carmen, and he wished he could have been here tonight, but he couldn't. And our discussions with him, and this is third party, so he's not here to say it himself, but he said that there were several emails, between Mr. Elko and himself, that because of the silt fence, because of the snow fence, and some other reasons, that he was not ready to start, and he was not to do so. And there were several discussions about not getting into Phase Two as well, and all of those were done anyways. And I don't have the emails, I don't have the exact wording of any of them. But from what Carmen said, this discussion went on because he didn't have the permit to start the tree cutting, and he was doing it anyway, and told them to stop, and then he continued.
Well, I have to tell you, I had a face-to-face conversation with Carmen after he had brought that to their attention, and he said it was being tended to. So I don't know what the right side of that story is.
We did, and he came out and looked at it, and he gave us, he says, yes, it's, it's okay.
That's not...
No, I didn't say that he said it was okay. He said it was being attended to. You still end up having to get a building permit, permission to end up moving forward on that, that's all.
And as of Saturday, the silt fencing, snow fencing was still not in place, I haven't been there today.
We did not put any more up, so I won't tell you that we've done any more.
At our planning commission meeting, Carmen said to the commissioners that he had gone out to the site, found that they're working without permits, told them that you're in Phase Two, you don't have your snow fence and silt fence, and to stop. And he left, and they continued. That's what Carmen told us.
So I want to see a red tag. I mean, is there, is this something we can do tonight, is stop this until all the ducks are in a row?
Well, he can't do anything regardless, as far as I'm concerned, until he gets that damn document signed.
We'll sign that, we'll go through, we'll get our surveyors out there, and we'll have them stake Phase Two, silt fence, tree fence. But we want to remove some trees.
Get a permit, unapproved permit.
That's why my concern about the red tag is, who knows? We've seen how this has been, been treated so far. I mean, who knows how long, how long it's going to take you to apply?
Now, we're not going to operate on a who-knows thing. If he complies with what the rules are, then he gets to move forward.
Right, we're going to go and get it caught up to snow.
But there's rules against taking out those trees.
I know, I mean, we're not going to get him to grow trees back, so we have to come up with something else.
There has to be something, and I think that should be come up, that agreement should be made before he continues to work out there. That should be part of, the agreement should be handling, you know, Carmen needs to reevaluate all this because there may be different trees you have to save now, since you've taken out others that you chose to. I think that needs to be evaluated by Carmen before this can move forward.
Did your surveyor actually look at the plan to see which trees were going to be saved and which trees were not?
We followed, he staked it, and we followed the line.
Okay, let's go back. Did he actually know the plan?
He did the plan. I just had to assume it's, it's Washington Engineering who put it all in, and we just followed that. You know, I didn't look at every tree, I'm...
So why tag them? Why even include them in the develop, if you didn't look at the plan? I mean, what else are you not looking at in that plan?
I hope nothing.
Well, you're not really...
Somebody really does need to be accountable for what's going on, come on.
If you took out trees that we shouldn't, we'll be responsible for replacing them.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, nothing is going to happen until you sign that document.
Well, that's the first step, yeah.
I don't think anything should be done until you just resolve your tree issue.
Well, we should resolve it tonight.
No, Carmen's going to play a role in that.
Yeah, Carmen's not here tonight, we can't solve it tonight. Carmen has to go evaluate the trees that were destroyed and see what trees are going to be left, and it needs to be reevaluated. So that's not something we can do tonight.
I don't think he's going to be in town until Friday. I don't think we should make him have to do it.
Well, it's going to take us a couple of days to get the tree fence and the silt fence up and, you know, the second phase.
Sir, you're not listening to what we're saying. You don't do anything until you sign that document.
Are we going to sign that tomorrow morning?
Well, is your attorney going to be around tomorrow morning? Does he have to come in? Okay. What's your attorney's name?
Carl Frankena.
What's his last name?
He was in England, I think, visiting his grandchildren or something. He's semi-retired.
Semi-caustic.
For clarification now, if the document is signed tomorrow, can we go in and install some of those?
No, no, no. Because you have to now deal with the trees you cut down, you have to meet with our planner, you have to go through that whole, because you know what? We did a spot check, our planning commission did a spot check, and there was twenty trees cut down, just on the spot check. So now our planner's going to have to go back in there, probably with somebody from the planning commission, and look at that document that you finally are going to sign tomorrow, and say, okay, these are the trees that were cut down, as Aaron suggested. Now we're going to have to sit down and figure out what you're going to do about them.
I doubt that there's stock where we can get some level of parity for what's been lost.
And somebody needs to pay the planner.
But, you know, first of all, you're not going to replace a hundred-year-old.
No, I know, but there might have been something that was forecasted to be felled later on that might end up making up for it.
Fairly double.
Yeah, well, I mean...
There's a number that are missing in because of the areas that are undisturbed as of now. And if you took into account the ones that are healthy and were deemed for removal, that will be equal to the ones that are gone, I don't think you're going to buy that. Some of the trees that are left in the other areas are...
Box elders.
Yeah, they're box elders and...
Mm-hmm, junk trees, yeah.
There's nothing that's going to match a walnut.
And, and the, and the only way to really accurately reflect what's gone is to get another survey done, and at whose expense.
That's what I said. We know whose expense it's at.
So you were letting people go in there and just take wood and stuff? So is that where your walnut went? Do you let them take the walnut logs?
No, we were told not to cut the walnut.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Your guy last night, who was helping to cut on the property last night.
Who was that? I didn't, I didn't know anything about that.
There's certain, there's certain rules, like if a circumference of a tree was taken down, then you have to put, like, say the circumference is twenty, what, you said twenty inches? That might equal thirty trees of a regular tree. And we've got plenty of places to plant trees in the city, don't we, Bob? There you go.
The surveying, anything over four inches, right, Jason?
Yeah, we put tags over four inches. But the black walnut is twenty inches in diameter, not... If it was a red oak, then it's thirty-eight inches.
Yeah, so I mean, those, those, there's a, there's a formula, there's a formula for replacement when that happens.
It's twenty, I don't know what the number is, but it might be thirty, it might be twenty, whatever the number is.
And we can find a place to plant them in the city, right, Bob?
We can always use trees. And we may decide just to plant more on-site, too. I mean, that's something...
We'll decide where you're planting your trees.
Well, if we took them out of a spot, we'd like to put them back so they grow back again.
You should have left them.
May I say something? If there's any agreement made tonight, I would like to make it perfectly clear that it's an agreement that they do not use Grand Court for anything. They blocked their vehicles for two days in the middle of the cul-de-sac, and we could not get our cars through. I had to back my car up to get into my house because I was using the car, I was using the car for something that I don't normally do. And people walked their dogs along there and couldn't get along the sidewalk. There was no, and I have not seen the agreement that was made to the council. But as far as I'm concerned, as far as I was aware, there was, there was, Grand Court was not to be used, period. And that has been violated for two days in a row. So that was twice a violation for Grand Court as well. Grand Court should be left alone.
The tree fence...
Make, make sure. I'm not joking around. Make sure about this stuff. Don't try toying with us for the duration of this project.
So just so we're all clear, and I, I hate to sound like an attorney right now, but I will. What is your understanding of what we want you to do?
At this point?
Yes.
We're going to sign the agreement tomorrow.
Okay, what else?
We're going to have a conversation with Carmen to decide what the plan of action is to relook at the tree survey.
Okay, what else?
At that point, you give me the ability to do nothing else until that's done.
Okay.
Are, is there a reason not to have the surveyors go out there and stake more definitively or check to see if they made errors?
Yeah, there is a reason.
Yeah, because the surveyors actually that you used the last time apparently weren't following the plan and decided that trees that should have stayed are no longer there. So we have concerns about the surveyor.
Not, not necessarily the surveyor, the guys with the chainsaws might have just started willy-nilly hacking stuff down.
They might have got loose in a spot where they shouldn't have.
The trees that are down, that were still on-site, that were to stay, were clearly marked for removal. So it wasn't the guys coming down, it was whoever was really tagging.
Every tree has a clear tag on it, and there's a definitive list of which trees should stay, the ones that don't have an X through. And they were spray painted for... I mean, it's pretty simple, it takes one second.
We did not spray paint any of them.
I'm not saying you did.
I, I know, I'm just, I'm not making excuses for that.
I'm a developer, I'm all for development, but you have to follow the rules.
I mean, it was old paint, wasn't it?
Wasn't that old?
Well, I mean, but I'm just saying, we did not spray paint. We didn't just say, there's a twenty-inch walnut, cut it down.
See, what else? I mean, it would certainly, if your saw guys were going to end up being malicious, it would behoove them to go ahead and spray paint the tree to say removal. They can hack away and then blame it on somebody else.
All right, and...
They had nothing to gain by sawing it down.
Well, and as far as permits, can Carmen give you authority to do that? To say it's okay for you to do something?
I don't think he said that was possible.
I'm just making sure, just making sure.
I'm assuming it's Mr. Smith that would be able to do it at this point.
Mr. Smith is your building inspector.
Yes, that's who you run all approvals, sir.
I've talked with him several times.
He's your building inspector.
If you've talked to him, sir...
But did he approve, approve all those?
At, at seven dollars a board foot for black walnut, somebody definitely had something to benefit by taking those trees out. He just said that nobody had anything to benefit.
I will tell you right now, for three fifty a board foot, you can have everything that we've taken down, that was agreed to take.
Well, yeah, by the time it's marked, seven bucks.
Let's go back to... I just want to make sure you understand who you need to go through as far as the, the process. It's, okay, you sure?
It wasn't that, I hadn't talked to him, just so it's clear about that.
I understand, but he is a, he's a building inspector, he's the one that issued the permits, and he's the one that makes sure that the plan's being followed. When you're going to Tim, when you're going to Carmen, you are bypassing that process, and it's a little upsetting.
Tim was, we were walking past each other.
You know who you have to go through.
You could be more definitive than that.
No, I'm just telling you that it was, I'm not putting this on Tim. We were walking, he was walking out as I was walking in. I told him what I was going to do, or I was coming to talk, and that's how that happened.
In other communities, you go through the building inspector for what you're going to do?
There's, every community has a different person that you talk to, surprisingly enough.
All right, I just want to...
But the process is the same every place.
It's the building inspector in every city.
We all file Boca.
Well, it is in this city, you now know it is this city, and you now know what you have to do, okay?
I've never worked in a city...
Seriously, this is taking up way too much of our time to have you in here every month, you know, so we have to yell at you for not following what we've done, what we agreed to. I mean, I, sir, you told me flat out that it wasn't gonna be a problem on the court. And now you're saying, I didn't think about it and it is a problem. The first time we're-
I woke up that night and I said, now, let me ask this question.
The, the bottom line is-
Am I not to use the court for bringing material for the bridge? So we can clarify that now.
That's what you told us, but then you also, we didn't know that you hadn't even applied for the permit.
When you're constructing the bridge, you can bring material through there, not-
Okay, so at this point here, everything else is not-
Not pre-staging and stuff where all of a sudden you're bringing in some cement and suddenly you've got other goodies for some other part of the project. Because you've clearly demonstrated that you're going to end up taking a mile, so.
I mean, we're just, at this point now, what we said, only material through Kestrel Court is for the construction of the bridge.
Okay, we're gonna hold you to that.
All right, it's clear.
Well, I thought it was clear, uh, last time we discussed this. So, I mean, we are gonna hold you to that and we are gonna hold you to what you told us you were gonna do tonight.
Please, no more excuses either.
And for the, uh, the purpose of Kestrel Court is for the protection of that creek. And it might only do one time, but somebody has driven heavy equipment through that creek. So the whole purpose of going through Kestrel Court to protect the creek, well, somebody didn't get the message.
Why?
There's a big set of tracks right through the creek. And it's still functional, but if they did it a couple more times, it wouldn't be.
Well, the DEQ's not gonna appreciate that, are they?
The DEQ is coming out tomorrow. They were out there-
I'd be out there tonight with your rake.
Except you haven't had permission yet.
The DEQ can shut you down like you've never seen it shut down.
I know it.
I'll get ahold of Carmen later tonight and make the arrangements. I also want clarification from the council. Are we giving him direction not to use grand court at all as well?
Absolutely. That had never been on the table.
Yeah, that was never on-
I realize it was never on the table, but I wanted that clarified since it was brought up close to the area.
Only Mill Street.
And Castle for the bridge construction only. Okay.
And you know, the thing you have to think about too is that, you know, look at the amount of people that showed up here tonight. Big Brother's watching you. I mean, it's just the way it is. I mean, you're not gonna come and tell us, oh, I didn't, I wasn't, I, I, it wasn't me. It wasn't, I mean, you've got half the neighborhood pissed off and watching you now.
Well, does anybody know the neighborhood, the blue van that was there tonight getting rid of it?
And that was somebody that was told that you could go back there because you were nice enough to say that people who lived in the, in our south could go get the firewood if they wanted. And so I know that person today. However, I'm Debbie Higgins and I sent you that pretty nasty email because I was tipped. And Ted, Debbie Higgins, six oh seven-
I know who you are.
Hey, what, for the record, six oh seven Kestrel, um, Ridge Drive. I live at Kestrel Court and Kestrel Ridge Drive, right on the corner where the fire hydrant is. I've lived there for twenty-two years and, you know, we've just always been so lucky. But I love our city and anything to do to help our city and make it better, I'm all for. But this is just the frigging beginning. And the seven of us people who live around Kestrel Court, it's been a nightmare. I've just been retired since September. I can sleep in, I can have quiet during the day. It's been a frigging nightmare, except for the last two weeks, you know, when, when there was nothing going on. I don't know what happened the last two weeks, why, we just got stopped. But hearing all that, you know, the, the, and they've been coming through Kestrel Court and they've been coming, going to our South Lion Eagle Heights Facebook page. They've been going through our subdivision to get to eleven miles to go to your other property there in Lion Township. Because it's a shorter route.
And we've gone to go in Mill Street now and we apologize for it. It's, it says no through traffic. And we probably, it, actually it says no through traffic on Mill Street. It doesn't say no through traffic.
But it should, it should.
It should.
Because this is just the beginning and I'm so glad that you guys are, somebody has to be accountable for what happens back there. And not with these trees, that's too late.
Yeah, no, we, we agree.
So I just wanna say thank you and I'm sorry to you too, but you know the rules.
Well, I mean, at this point here, we're gonna-
What about using grand court? I mean, what's, what's the defense of that? I mean, you knew grand court was never on the table to block in the sidewalk and the cul-de-sac so cars can't get through. I mean, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm with them too, you know? You're coming up with every excuse in the book. And I'm not even working with you.
Kinda control this.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get down with it.
So, you gonna make him run through it one more time or?
No, no, I'm, I'm satisfied.
He didn't write any notes down.
Mr. Smith, we're gonna, hopefully Carl can be part of the signing tomorrow morning. And talk to Carmen. And if Carmen and Mr. Smith say that we can go out and have the surveyors' flag, then we'll proceed from that spot.
Actually, put everything through Lynn. Lynn will end up being the final approval.
Okay. Does the council want me to have HRC as the surveyors rather than the surveyors that did the previous work to make sure that the survey work is done to plan?
Well, can we ask, was, was the survey stakes that you saw, did they look correct versus what it was, from what there was?
Just staking of the actual survey, though, like the stakes that said apply snow fence and snow fence here, where there was no snow fence and snow fence, yeah, it looked good, but there was just nothing there.
But there was nothing cut behind that?
Yeah, there was.
Where?
Oh, all, two thirds, two thirds of these too is all disheartened.
Two? Or it's supposed to be on one?
I mean, there's a clear line here of face on face, which has none of the stuff that's supposed to be there, no supplement.
Because we're trying to beat the bats out.
Could I ask for clarification too on the hours of construction?
Seven to seven. Seven to six?
Seven to six.
Seven to six.
What about the weekends? That includes Saturday and Sunday?
No, Sunday.
No, Sunday.
Sa- Saturdays are-
Saturdays on, yeah.
Saturdays on, but not Sunday.
No, no, I called in and I was told seven to seven.
That's what I thought it was too.
I thought it was seven to seven too.
No, it's not.
But if it's seven to six, I mean.
That's what I've always been like. I mean, I called, I called, I was very clear because I knew I didn't want to aggravate anybody on the hours.
Man, you called about the wrong stuff there, buddy.
I can't win.
And what, and does that mean no Sunday?
No Sundays. No Sundays.
But there was that one time. That's when I sent you the email. And that, that was a resident. That was a resident. I don't know.
Was that my guy? No.
I'm thinking the workers taking out the firewood.
And, and as I told, I told Deb, call the police. They're not my people. Call the police, let them shut down. My people are not there on Sundays.
What are we gonna do for the hours?
Lynn, can you clarify our hours and send the council an email with him CC?
I will make sure that there's nobody there.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Or send him an email with us CC?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the residents, if they have a complaint, can call your number?
Yep.
That'll be the, that'll be the most direct way of getting something done, folks.
Typically on a development, when there's a, you know, three possible accesses, but only one's supposed to be used, the developer will put up clear signage that says, construction traffic only, no construction traffic.
Yeah, there should be no ambiguity.
Well, I think what we're gonna do, we're just gonna run, we'll just run the fence across it so that-
It's all they didn't know.
So are you willing to put up these signs or, I mean?
Well, we're gonna put, we're just gonna put the fence across it so nobody can go in. Okay. And then when we have material that has to go for the bridge, we'll take the fence down. Okay. You know what? Signs are only, people don't pay attention to signs all day long. You drive down the expressway, the sign says seventy.
Well, snow fences are the same nature. I mean, if somebody says, I'm not driving around, I'm going right through there, they'll move the snow fence.
It's not that easy.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
For crying out loud.
Yeah, let's-
All right. I don't see that we've got anything new we need to discuss at this time, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I make one comment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm just gonna get this over with, I'm sorry.
Any construction, traffic, construction noise outside of business hours, residents, please call the police department because if you call a city number, they won't be here yet. If there is construction noise or construction activity outside of the ordinance hours, please, residents, call the police department. We will be there and we will start writing tickets.
You're going to be monitored very closely. All those neighbors around there are going to be paying attention to what's going on. We're all going to be paying attention to what's going on. You really need to start getting your game together, all right?
You might not wanna start till eight.
I mean, and I, and I apologize for working till seven because we were told it was seven. I didn't mean, but it is seven in the morning now.
Yeah, well, Lynn's gonna send you a clarification.
She'll verify that. You're not gonna be working tomorrow anyhow, so she'll have that out to you tomorrow.
We're gonna move the equipment out of there tomorrow. Is that okay to take the equipment out?
What equipment do you have in there?
We got a couple of skid steers and a bulldozer. We can load right on Mill Street and leave.
I don't see tying him up not to be able to use his equipment as appropriate, but-
No, just make sure it's done after seven in the morning.
And guys, guys showing up to the site before seven, please don't call the PD if the guy's sitting there in his truck waiting for seven o'clock to start working.
We start, we start the, we wait till seven o'clock before we start any engines. Just let them idle and warm. We've been down that road before where they start them at quarter to seven, so they're right to roll at seven and we've been told not to do that, so we've, we've learned that.
All right, that was fun.
Is it pertinent to this?
Yes. Carl Richards, three ninety Lennox. I'm sure Mr. Elko would agree with me on this and for the benefit of council. The subcontractors that he has on the property, whoever they may be, I feel the city should know the names of their companies. The group that's in there today, when I was up there, they have no names on their doors of their trucks. There's no MPSC license number visible, okay? And for, for the benefit of the city, since this is, you know, in this public domain, I would think the names of the subcontractors ought to be notified to the police department, the building inspector and so on and so forth. Thank you very much.
I don't see any, any reason to do that.
My truck is there. It has MPSC on, it has my name on the door. My workers who drive their own personal vehicles do not have to have those on them.
If you guys got, if you've got guys that are working for you that are driving commercial vehicles with no markings, Lloyd will end up having a conversation with them on their way out, so.
That's fine. I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, if somebody gets a ticket, it's on them, so.
It's on them.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question? Just to ask you real quick. My name's Mark Kip. I'm on the, the end of the cul-de-sac at Grand Court. I was just wondering, when we look out our kitchen window, we really had a great view with the property there for many, many years and we're thankful for that and understand the development has to happen. But like with all the logs, where all the trees have been cut, there's, there's huge piles of logs, like spaced out all around. Is that, does that get taken care of within the next month, two months? Or do, do those piles of logs stay there for, you know, through the whole project? You know, three years, four years, whatever it's gonna be?
I mean, it's in the rain in the greenbelt area?
Part of what got me in trouble was trying to have people take the logs out for firewood and that's, that's it. But we're, we have a company contracted to ship the logs. We've contacted several people to look at the walnut. We're not sure if there's enough value in what anybody's offering us to even make it worthwhile to sell the walnut. You know, they were, so to answer your question, the wood will be removed.
Yeah, now he didn't know it was cut down.
That check for the walnut could be remitted to the City of South Lion Treasurer.
Pardon?
That check for the walnut could be remitted to the City of South Lion Treasurer.
I'll give you the walnut check.
I mean, that won't get you off the hook, but it'll start-
Is my penance for the trees we cut down. I won't tell you that right now.
I thought you, I thought you didn't think the walnut was cut down.
No, 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 no.
Let's not buy that.
I don't, I don't think they're worth, they're, we've tried. We had the same progress. We tried-
All right, it's mute to, to our interest. Thank you. We're gonna move on. Unless you've got something else, you gotta fire off. We're onto new business. Consider request for sponsorship funding for the South Lion Area Youth Assistance.
The, uh, South Lion Area Youth Assistance Organization is an organization that the city is a part of. We're required by state law to provide youth assistance for juveniles and their families that may come in contact with, uh, the court system. Um, for several years, the city has chosen to do this through the South Lion Area Youth Assistance. Our portion of the contract is thirteen thousand dollars a year, which is significantly less than what it would cost us to run the organization ourselves. And so I'm asking for the commission to approve continuing to support this organization and authorize signing the agreement for the upcoming fifteen, sixteen fiscal year.
That's the same amount we spent last year too, so.
It has not increased.
And we've been making this payment since the nineteen sixties. So I think that's, uh, since they first developed in the late sixties, it's, uh, has, I personally, with my kids going through school, they had some benefit from that program as well. So, so may I make a motion to approve that?
I will. Because I'm very familiar with these organizations, having worked with them in my prior career. So I'll move that we continue to support the South Lion Area Assistance Organization for fiscal year twenty fifteen through twenty sixteen, authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
I'll, I'll go ahead. I'll support.
For discussion, Kayle, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consider request for permission to conduct the book trilogy run.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, annual fundraiser for the, uh, library. Uh, I've reviewed the route and I do recommend approval. It's necessary to close Nine Mile Road from approximately nine AM to nine fifteen AM on Saturday, May sixteenth. Coincidentally, Ms. Hanon here is, is here to answer any questions you might have, but I recommend approval.
I move that we approve the closure of westbound Nine Mile from Millennium Middle School to the South Lion Rail Trail from nine AM to nine fifteen AM on Saturday, May sixteenth, two thousand fifteen.
For discussion?
I'm running.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, now I'd like to have you have a, consider resolution declaring April twenty-fourth Arbor Day in South Lion, since we are declared a tree city.
So moved.
Not anymore.
Yeah, minus a few, but more on the way. Supposedly, okay. Do you second it, Aaron?
No.
Joe?
I didn't second it.
Yeah, I'll second.
For discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agreement for purchase of a storm sewer easement and pay part of the cost to relocate the city storm sewer.
Mr. Mayor, I can address this one. This is an agreement to purchase storm sewer easement and pay part of the cost. This is, relates, arises out of a storm sewer that crosses one fifty, a, I believe it's a vacant parcel where the expansion of the neighboring building will be expanded and they can't expand without addressing this storm sewer in some fashion. During this process, we learned that there is no recorded easement in favor of the city for this storm sewer. And through discussions with the owner, we put together proposed terms of fifty-eight hundred dollars to purchase the storm sewer easement where it will be relocated and to contribute seventeen thousand dollars toward the cost of that. That is roughly half, half of the estimated cost of doing the relocation. The, the owner and business owner will deal with any other costs that come up during that process and the city will take care of recording and dealing with its side of the easement part of it.
So that would be our total cost for the project? The seventeen thousand?
No.
I mean, I understand the five thousand eight for the cost of the easement, but as far as the-
It's only twenty-two eight.
Right, that'd be our total cost.
The total is twenty-two eight. There will be some incidental costs related to recording that we have to deal with. If we deal title policy, we'll have to pay for that, but that's all on the city.
Okay.
And I, I did include, um, the letter agreement has been signed by the owner and they provided the appropriate environmental affidavit.
Okay.
Now, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Fagan Family Real Estate LLC in South Lion Collision for the purchase of a storm sewer easement at the price of five thousand eight hundred dollars and to pay seventeen thousand as part of the cost of relocating a city storm sewer.
Second.
Further comment?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm gonna be voting no on it. I, during a lot of the closed session, I was opposed to it being in the, um, building industry. Um, I feel that this sets a precedence that I am not interested in. And there was a lot of other issues, so I just wanted on the record because most of that was discussed, um, during closed session.
And as I stated back to you, there, this is, this is an unusual case. Not everybody has a city storm sewer going through their property that, uh, shouldn't be there.
And you can vote the way you'd like to vote.
Mm-hmm. Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we can, uh, we now have the reappointments. And there's been, these are all re, these are all comebacks, so to speak, and, uh, willing to serve their terms again. And, uh, I'll be making a motion for that person and I'll need somebody to second it. And I'll be making a motion for that person, and I'll need somebody to second it.
Which, can we, is it...
Starting off with, I know you don't have a sheet in front of you, but I'm starting off with the planning commission.
And when do these terms expire?
They just expired.
They all expire the same day?
No, they're rotating. There's four years.
No, there's, these are three.
Oh, okay.
There's three of them, and then there's three more in '16, three more in '17.
So we're only voting on the ones for '15?
Yes. And the first one being Scott Lanham.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, that's why I need just a second. I guess we can, we can vote as a group on these, how you wanna do that?
Well, let's just do them individually.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, Wayne Chubb for the planning commission?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Jason Rose for the planning commission?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jason came on recently, but had just finished a term for somebody else, so that's why he was up so fast, because if he looked familiar to you. But he was graciously ready to go on forward. So was Scott, by the way. Joe Rizzi for the zoning board of appeals. I, I state his name as, unless there, I should clarify, I should state unless there's somebody else on this council that wants to be the liaison to the ZBA, Joe said he's willing to continue, but if there's anybody that thinks that's something they wanna do, it can be spread around, so.
I'm good with Joe.
That's, that's a second? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Frank Fogarty for the zoning board of appeals?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Ron Morelli for the zoning board of appeals?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? By the way, I have spoken to each one of these people. Now Parks and Recs, Erica Wilson?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Alex Clark, she's another one, just filled in for a few months, and now she's up for a regular term for the Parks and Recs. You second it, Glenn? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And our longest-running commissioner on any position in the historical society, or not society, commission, Roger Hypal, wishing to start his 31st year.
I'm second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? And where he led better, Mr. Everything Around This Town, and his term is up, and he's willing to continue on.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And then Gary Wickersham, who was finishing up a term that was resigned on, so he's looking for his first full round. And again, all on the historical commission.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We have nothing on the housing commission do this time around, and I'm not quite sure on the downtown development authority, because that would be under Lynn's direction.
We are actively seeking a member. We have one open position, but we have not found a volunteer yet for the position.
Okay, there's such high-paying jobs, they just swarm, and I know how they come.
Who's out of town that we could...
Yeah. Okay, so we're all set on the reappointments. I feel good about that. I wish I didn't, I wish I'd got it to you the last meeting in March, but I kinda had an unusual month. Now we can move on to number seven. I'll throw it to you, Lynn.
No, it is up to the council. The council is the one that wanted to discuss concerns or complaints.
Well, I'll just start then, because there's some information I'd like to share. Actually, the way that the Open Meetings Act reads is that to consider dismissal, suspension, and disciplining of, to hear complaints or charges brought against, or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, employee, staff member, it kinda goes on. But then, then it says, a person requesting a closed hearing, I'm sorry, if the named person requests the closed hearing, so the way it was put on the agenda was based off of you requesting this, but that's just a schematic, but that's okay. I actually, when I read this, I did have some reservations about how it was worded.
It was worded based specifically on the way the MCL is worded.
Okay, so the, the concern I had was, I really didn't think it was about complaints, but more along the lines of discussing if, I would, I would use the word misconduct, if misconduct was, was used. So what we're talking about was misconduct against, to discuss against, about the city manager regarding her use of my name, actually, unfortunately, during the disciplining, I'm sorry, using my name incorrectly and making false statements about me during their, her termination of a city employee. So, and so in my opinion, it actually should state reflecting, I'm sorry. It should state to consider disciplinary action against the city manager for making false statements attributed to Councilman Rizzi during the termination meeting of a city employee. But I've, I've turned in a letter to council and to our city attorney, and I don't have it here, but I'm willing to share it with anybody. Basically, I was wrongfully used my name, and I've consulted with my attorney, and we've made it public to the council, and it's, like I said, it's a letter I'm willing to share with, with anybody they wanna see. And I basically have nothing to hide. So from there, that's, that's all I wanted to say about the situation.
Sure. Joe, what's your endgame here? Are you trying to get another city attorney, our city manager fired?
No, certainly not.
So, so what do you wanna accomplish here with that statement?
I would think if you had your name falsely written, falsely used, and Ms. Laner has made it clear that she did falsely use my name, and she even offered to write a retraction, that you would want that to come out. That's the endgame. I'm, I'm, I'm having a moral compass guide me right now. And my moral compass says, if you're, if I'm being, if misconduct is happening where somebody's name is being misused, it should be discussed and brought out in the open.
Sure, sure. I just wanna know, you made your statement, so what's the purpose? What do, what do you wanna have accomplished here? What do you want us to do? Do you want us to suspend her? Do you want us to fire her? I mean, this isn't the first time you brought this motion, or you brought a motion up to fire a city manager. So what, what are you trying to accomplish with that statement?
Well, again, certainly this isn't about firing anybody. This is about, like I said, using inappropriately somebody's name. I would think, Mike, if you were being, having your name used when it had no business being used, you would want it discussed in an open manner and not behind closed doors and shove, shove underneath the rug. I, I mean, I wouldn't want, I don't wanna participate in a cover-up, is what I'm saying. That's what I don't want. I don't know if you want to, but that's not...
I'm sorry, if I wanna do what?
Well, in my opinion, not bringing it out in the open is sweeping under the rug, or it could be construed as a cover-up. That's not something I wanna participate in.
Joe, I didn't, I didn't know anything about it until you sent this raging email, and by the way, I would like to make a formal request that all our emails now go through the city. I'm sick and tired of dealing with my personal email as my city councilman email address. So I'm making a request that all our emails, at some point going forward, actually go through the City of South Lyon. But to go back to your email, I knew nothing about this until we got your email. And apparently offended you, which is, I understand why it might have offended you, but why share this with us when all you had to do is make a phone call? And first of all, how did you find out that your name was used?
Well, Ms. Laner told me.
No, 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 you made a phone call, I believe, didn't you?
Yeah, I made a phone call to Ms. Laner, and she admitted that she inappropriately used my name.
Right, but how...
That's a fact.
But how'd you find out? I mean, what, what got you to make that phone call?
You know, I'm not an attorney like you, and I'm not under a court of order.
You're accusing our city...
As much, as much as you would like to have me on the stand, I'm not on the stand right now, and I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't have to answer that.
Joe, okay, that's fine.
Ms. Laner admitted to me that she inappropriately used my name. All I'm trying to do is get the record straight instead of pushing this back.
How do you expect that to be accomplished? How was the record made straight?
Yeah, what do you want us to do?
I mean, you already said what was going on. Lynn, could you validate that you used his name improperly?
At this time, based on the employment agreement, if you have any questions, concerns for me, and based on my attorney's recommendation, if you would like me to answer any questions, I will do so in writing after the meeting.
But I just wanna know what you wanna, what do you wanna...
That's a strong move.
Yeah, what do you want us to do?
Well, let's just be clear. I was told, and I have no misgivings about telling to the whole City of South Lyon, to the whole public, that I was told that my name was inappropriately used. And as I mentioned, I was told that I would, that Ms. Laner be willing to send a retraction. So if you, again, if your name's being drug up when it shouldn't be, I think that's something, I, to me, that's misconduct. I apologize if you disagree.
No, no, just an apology, isn't it?
Yeah, she apologized to you too, so it's like, okay, let's stay out of this.
No, Joe, but see, this is the thing. You're accusing our city manager of misconduct, so I'm assuming at some point you would like the council to do something about that? Or are you just saying you're making a statement and you're just gonna leave it like that?
Well, I think that's up to council to decide. I mean, if, if you think it's appropriate to let people, to go around firing people and saying, attributing false names and saying that certain people made complaints when they didn't really file complaint, you think that's okay? You think that's fine? Then, that you can go on doing that? But I'm just saying, it's up to the council to make that determination.
Joe, what would you like us to do? You are making this statement, you're asking the council to do something. What would you like us to do?
That's why we're talking, that's why we're talking about it now, to decide after there's any...
Go ahead, please, Glenn, I'd like to hear.
I think we'll probably get the answer at some point after Lynn has answered our questions from our executive session, that the onset of this and what her motivation was and whatever, but the idea of you're just parroting the same thing that your name was used isn't gonna end up being constructive. So you've said it, I heard it, I think everybody here heard it. Let's go into executive session.
I didn't know that we were.
I don't do that.
We, we stopped executive session for this session. We moved this to number seven.
For open discussion.
For open discussion, she didn't want it in executive session.
It's not executive, it's closed meeting.
It's closed.
It's not executive session.
How do we end up asking the questions that you can write the answers to and provide them sometime in the future if we don't go to closed session?
According to my employment agreement, which the city agreed to, under section 11, the council shall review employees' job performance at least once annually, with the first review being February 2015, and subsequent annual reviews to occur during the month of February for each year thereafter, unless the parties agree otherwise. The annual performance reviews and evaluations shall be in writing, and in accordance with the criteria and format developed jointly by the city council and the employee, the city council shall provide the employee a reasonable and adequate opportunity to discuss the employee's evaluation with the city council. The annual performance reviews and evaluations shall be reasonably related to the employee's written job description and shall be based in whole or in port on goals of the employee's performance that are jointly developed and adopted by the city council and the employee.
So essentially, that states that we have no, no opportunity for peer review of your performance save for in February?
No, you have the opportunity to at any time it says to change, so, the first review being February 2015, and subsequent to occur during the month or unless agreed upon by both parties otherwise.
Okay, so while you were out is when we should've been having this conversation?
Correct.
Like, that's really troubling. I mean, that you even go there. This is, this is getting weirder as time goes on.
Well, let's go back to the issue, new business number seven. We have a council member accusing our city manager of misconduct. He made a statement. He's not seeking any sort of redress or, from her, as far as what he wants his council to do. So I'm kinda confused why this was even brought up.
I can clarify. I, I, in the letter that I sent, which you clearly read, I did ask for a letter retracting that I had any involvement, filing a complaint, which I made clear that I never, that I've never done.
So if you get that, will you be happy?
Well, I mean, I think I should've got it a day or two after I, I requested it.
But you didn't. If you get it now, are you, are you gonna be good?
I would say, I would be, I would feel a little, I would feel a little better, but...
Also, in that letter, it says, "Any further communications," I thought had to go to your attorney, "will be shared with your attorney." Is that correct?
I said would be shared, yeah, that's no prob, like, I would imagine anybody that has accus, false accusations made against them, they would be, wanna be consulting with attorney, that's just common sense.
Let's move on to manager report and council comments.
Actually...
So, we're not doing, okay, go ahead.
No, no, what do you want, Joe?
Well, does, does anybody else have any pause about the way this whole thing had been conducted? Because I certainly do.
I do.
Well, I have more pause about this, what we're discussing right now, as opposed to what took place earlier.
See, I'm, this is, this doesn't, I mean, I can understand Joe's being concerned about his name being thrown in the ring inappropriately. I have way more concern about Lynn's use of his name inappropriately, and that makes me wonder about the, the conduct in the whole process of this termination that had taken place that initiated this whole thing. So... That was disturbing to me.
That's a separate issue.
And, and if, if we choose to deal with that, I'm willing to deal with that as a separate issue. But the issue before us today is Mr. Rizzi's issue. And as far as I can see, that's been so. So I'm suggesting we move on.
So, just so I'm clear, then it's okay, and let me just take a step back. Let's say to, to anybody out here, you're, somebody gets terminated.
Don't sway to the audience, sway to us.
Anybody, you get terminated, somebody, somebody you work with or no, let's say no, gets terminated, and then you come to find out that a supervisor or manager comes and says, oh, yeah, I, I, I told you, I told that person that, that you made complaints against them when you really didn't do that. I mean, and they just basically made it up. I mean, that's, how are you gonna react?
So, would you like to make a motion to fire the city manager?
No, no, what I'm saying is, if it's misconduct, if it's misconduct, we need to discuss if it's misconduct. But, and it, but it sounds like nobody feels that's misconduct, so we'll move on. That's, that's fine, that's fine. I've aired my grievances, and it's out there. So I've said enough then.
I do think that's misconduct. I mean, if there, if your name was used without knowledge that that was the case, I think that that is misconduct, but does it rise to a level of, of some punitive action?
That would be, and Harvey, just to clarify what you said, that you would address it at a later date, is that like during a review?
I, maybe, yeah, that would be an appropriate time.
Okay. I'll just, one of my problems with the whole thing is that it seemed, it, it seemed like it was a direct question that could've taken a direct answer, not a three-page letter by our city attorney. That's where my problem comes in to play, is how much money Tim has billed the city over this issue. That's a huge problem. I mean, I got a three-page letter on it the other day in the email, and so that is something that is troubling to me, just the use of our city attorney on the taxpayers' dollars over a question that, did you say this, yes or no? If you said it, you know, why did you say it, and was it inappropriate or misconduct or not misconduct? I'm disturbed at the way in which it was all handled.
Well, I think...
And if that's something that is discussed at a review, then that is something that's discussed at a review.
I think that the purpose of that letter was to spell out distinctly and specifically what we could and could not discuss in a closed session. what we could and could not discuss in a closed session. That's the purpose of that letter.
And we're not in a closed session.
Well, there was a, there, city manager at one point requested a closed session.
No, I had requested it.
Well, but then, on the, the bottom line is, I think the purpose of that letter was to make it clear what we could and could not discuss. And if we did discuss things at an open session, the consequences of where those actions would lead if the discussion went into something about the termination. That was my understanding of the letter.
There was a lot of letters. That wasn't just the only letter. I mean, I'm sure Tim put a good eight hours into it, eight billable hours into it, at minimum. And that's a little disturbing to me.
Okay.
I've got a comment on that, but it's more appropriate for another time, I think. I'll do it during council comments.
Okay.
Done with this issue for now. We'll go on with the manager's report.
Okay, this afternoon, we had a joint meeting with the road commission, Lyon Township, the school, and the city on a safe routes to school grant application. It is moving forward. The student and parent surveys have been completed. The walk audits, which are the next step in the application, the paths have been laid out. And the Centennial, Millennium, Sayer, and CES principals and building directors will all be putting together time between now and the 15th of May to do the walking audits, which is the next requirement. We will then meet in early May to begin the actual paperwork of putting the grant application together. We need to set a date for the budget workshop. You should have all received a copy of the 2015, 2016, 2016, 2017 budget on Friday evening. You had all suggested in the email last week that you wanted at least a week to look at it. So I'm asking if you have decided upon a time when you are all available to have that budget workshop yet?
I'm probably the outlier. I, I don't get back in town until eight, so, except on Friday. So, Friday, it's all day.
There was a discussion, at least one member had mentioned doing it on a Saturday.
We've done that before.
Yeah.
And that was my suggestion, because I was thinking of you, and-
I'm all right with that.
Yeah, I'm available Saturday. Is that the 18th, or are we going to do it the 25th? 18th?
If we do it on the 18th, I am not available until 9:30 in the morning.
Well.
We could probably work that out.
We can accommodate that.
All right, 9:31.
You're gone, you're gone, no, Mike?
No, I'm here, believe it or not.
18th?
I say, that's this Saturday, let's do it.
Yeah.
So, at 9:30? Or do we want to do 10 o'clock?
Do 10.
10 o'clock? All right. We'll do the budget workshop on the 18th.
You got to post it, don't we have to post something like that, so public can listen in?
Yes, but 18 hours in advance. So, we'll get it posted tomorrow.
Okay.
Also had sent out an email to all of the council members on the Chamber Awards banquet. I've heard back from two of the members on wanting to attend. There are several South Lyon businesses, as well as both of our first responders, the police and the fire department that are being recognized at the Chamber Awards banquet this year. Other than Mike and Harvey, is there anyone else that is interested in attending? It is the 29th at the Links, from 11:30 in the morning to 1:30 in the afternoon.
I'm interested, I just don't know if I can do it.
And the where again?
The Links of Novi. It is one of the members of the chamber.
Yeah, off 10 mile. Help me in.
Okay.
It was 11:30 or 11?
11:30 to 1:30.
Because you need a head count, because we have to pay a free fee, right?
It is $15 per person.
I have money for you.
Um, is that it?
Um, looking at my notes, that is all I have this evening. I was going to inform you about the new IT company that was working with us until the end of the fiscal year, but as that came up during budgets, or during the bills, I don't feel the need to rehash that. As I said, we will be going out for an RFP, RFQ. We've got at least three companies that are interested in potentially providing us with IT resources.
Is this one of them, the one that's doing the interim?
This is one of them. There's one that's also currently providing resources to the police and fire department, as their company has also dissolved. And there is a third company that is working with some of the former employees from our previous company.
Do you feel confident with the, the new people?
I do feel very confident with the new people. They work with several of the municipalities in Oakland County. They also work with, they're familiar with Clemus and Lean, so they can work very well with the police and the fire departments. And they're willing to go through all the background checks.
All right, Joe?
Just curious, with the Methodist Church, with the sign, if there are other steps they have to do? Because I was under the impression when we approved it, that they would be all set. Is there something we can do to?
I am trying to get a hold of Karma and sit down with it. I was not aware that the limitation on the LED portion was going to be a problem for them. What they're looking at is a LED portion the same size as what they have for their current lettering. The ordinance is written in such a manner that it can't exceed one-third of the face. I'm working with Karma on how we can better suit that without having to make either an additional change to the ordinance or require a variance. But I am working on that, that, which is why I have not gotten a hold of Mr. Kniesel.
Okay. That was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But it's like 50 square feet aside. I mean, for each side?
It is, but it also requires, that 50 square feet also requires the base of the sign. And so it reduces the amount of actual usable LED.
I mean, 18 square feet is still, you know.
We will get this cleared out.
Ample amount of, of surface area.
Okay, Aaron?
I'm good, thank you.
Glenn?
Okay, the, the monitors for the children walking to school, who's actually involved in doing the count? Are it, is, is it the school entities?
It's actually not a count. What they do is they follow the kids as they walk home and see what the, what actual routes they're taking.
Oh, they're determining the pattern? I see.
Hiding in bushes, or what?
No, they, they, they meet at the schools, and when the schools get out, they follow the natural path that the kids are taking to see if there are areas without sidewalk, if there are drainage ditches, if there are places that trees need to be removed for safer crossings, different things that are going to be hazards that have to be fixed as part of the safe routes to school, just so that they can make sure that we put the sidewalks in the areas that kids are already walking. And the schools are planning on talking to the PTAs to see if they can get volunteers to do the audits.
Okay, good. Okay, I, I didn't remember her name, but the lady that was speaking to the idea of her water bill, it's not a capricious thing that the values of water bills are assigned. I mean, it's generated by it, it's a function of unit pricing and how much that unit is. So, I don't know how a bill escalates like that without either-
Could I comment on that?
Yeah, I'd love it.
I had a very nice talk with that lady. She was very pleased. We went out, changed her meter. We tried to get in her house numerous times. Phyllis might have taken a liberty to a point in a letter that I will talk to her about. But I did meet with that lady on the phone. We were at her house the very next morning at 10:30, went in. We were in and out within five minutes. The problem has been alleviated. She's been rebuilt. Everything's fine.
Okay. Were the units generated just wrong? I mean, how, how does that go so self?
It's an estimated bill. Is what happens is, Phyllis does an estimated bill because the, the meter itself needs to be replaced because, and we can't do an accurate, accurate reading.
The battery and the electronic meter had died, and we've been trying to get in to replace it. Nothing more than that.
Okay, well, I, I'm happy to hear that it's something that's explainable, so.
It was taken care of the very next morning that letter arrived.
Yeah, okay. And also, I, I wanted to, I'm going to call on Bob again, because Mr. Ledbetter had led the, the Boy Scouts do the creek cleanup, Yerkes Drain Cleanup throughout the city over Saturday. So if you could kind of, uh-
Love to.
Enhance that story.
Our 11th annual, we had 46 Boy Scouts, 10 leaders. We attacked every waterway in the city along with all the walking, the bike paths. And we had a 10-yard dumpster in the parking lot of the Tube Mill. And we, if we didn't fill that thing, we were 80% full. We pulled all televisions, tires, a baby crib, you name it, out of, out of the waterways around the city.
Hopefully, empty baby crib.
What I, what I like to tell people, what I like to tell people is that no one's going to pat you on the back for doing that work, because the walkers and the runners and the bikers aren't going to see the trash. So it isn't going to be in their mind. But if we weren't out there and these young men, scouts, didn't go out and do this job, it would have been on totally people's mind, because they would have seen this trash and that. So, all I can do is applaud Mr. Ledbetter, the Wellhead Protection Committee, Susan Martin, all those scouts and their leaders. Thank you very much.
So whenever you're on the bike path and you see nothing but really nice, clean areas, Bob wants you to think of his DPW guys.
And the Boy Scouts.
And the Scout.
Oh, man. You know, I'm going to let the rest of it go. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Uh, our next, never-ending, our next rec, center, community center meeting is going to be April, yeah, April 20th, 7:00 PM. And I believe Lynn is going to be here. So I, I'll have to check with Ann to make sure we have a room. But it'll be at-
Do you need the auditorium, or do you need one of the conference rooms?
I would say the conference room. So, it'll be at 7:00 PM. So I hope, if you're interested in the project, or if you have any concerns, please show up. Let us hear your concerns. Thank you.
Or ideas.
Yes, or ideas. Believe me, we'll take anything.
Okay. Harvey?
Thank you. This question is prompted by Aaron's comment about the length of the letter that you wrote, Tim. And I, I've been on council now for three terms, and I can count on one hand the number of times I felt compelled to call the city attorney. And I have the impression that some people have you on speed dial. Would I be correct in that assumption? Do you, you spend a considerable amount of time talking to council members?
I speak occasionally with certain council members. Some bring me their thoughts and want my input. Want to know what's going on from my perspective.
Okay. Is it something that's costing the city a lot of money?
I don't think so.
Okay. That's my question. And to the chief and the police department, nice job on the annual report.
Thank you. That was mostly Lieutenant Solik, who happens to be here this evening.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Now, there goes Phil, just, I'm ready to praise and compliment him.
Call him back.
Oh. All right, I'll stall for a minute here, but I doubt he'll get off that call. You know how he is. I want to let the council, okay, let the community know that there is a tornado drill Wednesday. Just so you weren't aware of that, they are going to pop one on you on Wednesday at 1:00, instead of the Saturday ones. And also, I was going to praise Bob Martin and Larry Ledbetter and Sue Martin and everybody. I did stop by and thanked several of the scouts that were, how their parents allowed us, in mud up to here. And they were just thought it was so neat, so fun. They were just having, it was so great. And if you saw the piles of stuff they pulled out. And nobody got drowned, right?
No.
With all the high, with the rain that we'd had, I was worried that creek was, was, it was the raging Yerkes.
Yeah.
And, but you guys did clean out a lot of stuff, and it's, and you've been doing it 16 years.
Thank you.
Larry Ledbetter's been bringing scouts for 11 years. And they had over 40 of them this time. That's, that's how many kids wanted to get involved. I think that's just wonderful in this day and age.
I don't know if it's the event, or if it's the pizza at the end of the day.
Yeah. So, also for the council, and I believe department heads, I, I just need to get a head count of who would be interested in going to the Tube Mill Special Invite Party on May 9, from 11 to 3. They're having, all the workers are bringing their families in, so forth, so they can see where their parents work in the mill. It's going to be wide open. It's going to be a party for everybody that's involved with the Tube Mill. But he, but Les, the vice president, did call me and ask if there was anybody on the council or some department heads that would be interested in coming.
What was the time again?
It's 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on May 9.
A Saturday.
And it's a Saturday. And he didn't throw it open to the general public, otherwise I'm sure there's some people would be very interested. But if I told him my head count was 842, I think I'd be getting in trouble.
Les would figure out a way.
And you can, guys, if you want to email me, or, or text me, or something, you don't have to answer this minute, but, you know, in the next week or so. Actually, we meet again before then, but I think he wants to know fairly soon. And he's not back. Phil and Abe and Kuanis put on a fabulous egg hunt again. If, if you don't have children, you really should go to these egg hunts and appreciate the thrill and the shrill of kids when they're let loose. If they would clean up their yards as fast, you know, it's just amazing how quick they can grab those eggs. And it's so well organized between young children and, you know, different age groups. And also, our chief, Mike Kennedy, directing traffic around the biggest mud heave you ever saw in the middle of a road, and trying to get them around safely. And, and with great suggestions of where they can go park and everything, is, is just super job on that. And of course, having our fire engines there. Unfortunately, Lyon Township was there and had a call and had to get out of there. And, and so, but anyways, you guys, that, that egg hunt is really a pleasure to watch. So Phil was in on that, so he gets his credit. And with this, I think we're all set.
I'd like to add one more thing, that with the creek cleanup, May 16th is going to end up being the citywide cleanup for all the parks and the entrance signs and things of that nature. So, free your calendar up for that day.
May what?
16th.
Isn't that our citywide garage sale?
It's the same weekend.
Same weekend.
Yeah, yeah. So meet at City Hall.
Yep, we got lots of stuff starting up. All right, I need to call for adjournment.
Make that motion.
I'll start.
Go ahead. On here, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay. Ends this meeting of one hour and 50 minutes. One hour and 50 minutes.